Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf. City Council meeting today is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Saxer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by our own Michelle Spencer because our Presbyterian Church Pastor Troy Winder has fallen ill. We wish Troy the best. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, thank you.
Thank you.
You can do it right here if you want. Wherever you want to go.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we are grateful for all the men and women before us tonight who have graciously given their time and talents to the betterment of our community. We ask that you please provide over this meeting and grant this council the power, wisdom, and knowledge to carry out your will and the tasks before them tonight, and help us to lead lives worthy of your love. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Fantastic. Thank you, Michelle. Please pass along our best to Pastor Bettendorf Presbyterian Church Pastor Troy Winder. Okay, I have a proclamation to deliver this evening for Hispanic Heritage Month, a great celebration, and for that, I would like to welcome Alicia Kiyasha. No?
Oh!
Kiyasa.
Kiyasa. Better? Kiyasa. And Tori Smith. Thank you, Tori, for being here. I really like your name. It's easy to pronounce.
Oh, God, Alicia, I'm sorry. Come on up here, ladies. Thank you both for being here. I practiced, and I was told what to do, and I still made it a mess. All right, I do have a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Thank you for being here.
The receiving. Whereas the Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce strives to support, promote, enhance the growth and success of local businesses, and to leverage assets, contributions, and unique Hispanic cultural identity to generate new businesses. And whereas the diverse Hispanic community has continued to build viable partners within the Quad Cities to build relationships with Hispanic entrepreneurs who are willing to take a chance, just as has been part of the rich history of the United States with immigrants from previous generations. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the City of Bettendorf recognizes the contributions made by and the importance of the presence of Hispanic and Latino-Americans to the United States. And whereas the City of Bettendorf does recognize, honor, thank, and thank the courage of those who went from Hispanic heritage to defender of this great country of ours, and to those who were killed or are missing in action, prisoners of war, and to those who are emotionally, mentally, or physically scarred, and those who were able to return home safely. And whereas today, 62.1 million people in America are Hispanic or Latino in origin. We in the City of Bettendorf would like to celebrate their Hispanic culture. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Mesa de la Herencia hispana. Close?
Wow.
Gave it a good try.
Do it in English, you are.
Four years of college Spanish, that's what I got. Ladies, welcome. We're glad that you're here.
Here, here.
Please.
You know what? Picture first. You were perfect. You were listening. I got myself discombobulated because I can't remember Spanish. Thank you. Awesome. I'm going to hold that.
Thanks.
Awesome. Please, you have the floor. Sneak up just a little bit. That'll pick you up or so.
On behalf of the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank Mayor Gallagher, the City Council, and the City of Bettendorf for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. It's important to celebrate as a community, and we would like to invite you to our next event on Thursday, September 22nd, starting at 3:30 for our pre-block party with Project Now at 709 Fourth Avenue in Moline. Please follow us on Facebook and LinkedIn for more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, all looking in.
Thank you.
Great to see you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
We are now at public requests of council. If you would like to be heard on an item that's not already on tonight's agenda, you have an opportunity to ask council or make a request of council at this time. Please make sure that you limit your comments to two minutes or so, and please try not to be repetitive. If we've heard from you before, we probably know what you're going to say. If you have something new, please share it. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling, and be respectful with your comments. It's public requests of council. Please approach the podium and state your name and your address before you speak. We'd like to hear from you.
Dan Ellard, 443 Grant Street in Bettendorf. I was hoping Randy would get here first because he would probably raise more racket than me, but I just want to say two things. Request that you decouple the Life Fitness Center from the landing, and also that you really consider Iowa Code Section 364.7 because the city can't make a gift to a non-governmental entity, as you know, but a 1.4 million price tag is kind of on its face not fair market value for that property, and I don't see how the city council can make a decision without an appraisal. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Nice to see you. Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council? Please approach the podium. Please state your name and address. Yeah, go right ahead. And if you think you want to speak, let's go right ahead to the back, get in line, stand by the pole there. I've had a couple opportunities where people don't move for quite a while. If I know you want to speak, I'd really like to hear from you. Please, sir, your turn.
Jason Dykemeyer, 2325 Runwood Court. And this is a request with regards to the splash landing project, and on behalf of the residents who live across the street on 23rd Street, we would like to have some type of public information given that would help us understand road access ways and changes that are going to be made that will impact access and enjoyment of our properties, which I think what I've seen on this proposed agenda is going to have a major impact on access, traffic, and enjoyment of our properties.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening to all. Randy Childers, 3050 Southampton Drive in Bettendorf. I'd like to address some concerns I have about the proposed water park. I guess my interpretation of the survey regarding the landing project, there were 200 or 2,778 responses. 466 responses supported the outdoor landing project, which would only be open for two and a half months during a calendar year. 1,229 responses requested an indoor water park, which has obviously opened the entire calendar year. This equates to 37% support of the landing project, and 63% wanted something else as in an indoor water park. Seems the citizens widely are widely against the outdoor landing project. At a tax value of $1.4 million, and we know the market value, the fair market value of the fitness center is extremely much higher than that, probably two to three times more. At the $1.4 million, the value of the fitness center is $23 per square foot. The average cost to build a new home in the Midwest is $110 per square foot. It certainly appears the City of Bettendorf is just giving away the fitness center and prime location land is on. This is a disservice to the citizens of Bettendorf. I understand the mechanical and maintenance of the water park is the sole responsibility of the city of Bettendorf. Based on the proposed size of the water park, these costs will more than likely surpass the current operational losses of the fitness center and splash landing combined after three to five years down the road. I base this on my mechanical analytical knowledge in the construction industry. Regarding indoor tennis at the fitness center, yes, the Y has agreed to keep tennis for 24 months, or if two new indoor courts were built. Not sure why someone would think the tennis community would accept going from three indoor courts to two indoor courts. There isn't any type of penalty in the contract if the Y decides to abandon tennis after 12 months. Is the city willing to spend legal fees for breach of contract? In closing, I hear that maybe four to five council members are not going to seek another term when they're up for reelection. So if and when costs overrun, stake the project sideways, and the Y and the fitness center, if the Y has the fitness center and the water park is delayed by a few years or never gets built, it certainly would not be fair to the new council members to bear the front of the backlash and have to deal with the fallout. All the fitness center members and users ask that the city council members consider voting no when it comes to Decision Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Childers. Just so that the audience is clear and the folks listening and watching this at home, there's three courts at the fitness center now. The agreement will call for three courts. The draft from last night has a typo. It's three courts. It's the same number of courts for a 24-month period. We're human. Next up.
Hello, my name's Randy Brockage. I live at 220 Betton Street in Leclerc. Also, I've been the PV Pleasant Valley Boys Tennis Coach for the past 31 years. Regarding those 31 years, anecdotally, I can tell you that I've known tons and tons, I don't know what that quantifies to, but tons and tons of families who've utilized the fitness center over the years. This is my third time before you, and I'm not going to say the same old stuff, but I never know quite what to say. This is surreal to me. After all, this is Bettendorf, Bettendorf, which I place up there in high regard with the reputation as a premier city, with plenty of population and plenty of growth, more and more expensive houses going up all the time. Why can't Bettendorf find a way to keep the fit? With those very valuable three indoor courts, basketball weights, jogging, fitness classes that fit so many of the citizens of Bettendorf. Honestly, Bettendorf is one of the last places I would have ever expected to find the city choosing to give up three indoor tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball weights, jogging, et cetera, that have served the community so well for decades. I don't get it. It just seems wrong on so many levels to me. It's a year-round indoor fitness center, year-round, 12 months, rain, snow, sleet, hail, everything. Cherished and supported by so many Bettendorf and PV families for decades, it's in a great location, the proposal by the city is to get rid of it. I just don't understand why. So many families still use the fit. If passed, this proposal would result in winners and losers, and it's clear who would be losing out. But why does anyone need to lose? Because the Y wants the building. Personally, I think it's time to go back to the drawing board and de-link the fitness center, the proposed water park, and the proposed ice rink. How did we get to this point? I ask myself. I know some have wanted to unload the fit for years, thinking it's not making money. The Y has a proposal, and it just fits, I guess, but it doesn't make sense to me. I see Palmer Hills and the fitness center in a similar way. Both cost the city money to keep them going, but I believe both are worth the support of the city and the citizens of Bettendorf. I certainly wouldn't advocate for the loss of either. These are, excuse me, both among the most valuable amenities or gems of Bettendorf, like the library and the family museum. I bet those don't make the city money either, but I'm sure that's not the point for those as well. What if Palmer Hills had the same scrutiny as far as making money? There'd be houses there right now. Anyway, what about the children's museum, the library? I believe it's unfair to expect the fit to make money for the city, and I don't see that as a good reason to lose the fit. So why is the fit scrutinized so much? I encourage you to vote against the proposal and to keep the fitness center. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. Good to see you.
Name and solid of our, I live on 2738 State Street in Bettendorf, and I've got a few questions for the people up there in front. On 28th and State, it dumps off onto the, you know, the State Street. They have a stoplight on Devil's Glen, but the amount of traffic coming down at you, it's like you gotta gun it, or you believe it or not, and you could get wiped out. Now, I was wondering, how much would that affect to put a stoplight, you know, green and yellow stoplight in that area? And I was told by one of the city council members that they were going to take care of the civic center. The guy has done a beautiful job, but then I says, well, there's that big bush out in front of it needs to be cut back because the wind blows and it makes the traffic terrible. Again, traffic terrible. Another one is on Mississippi Boulevard. My girlfriend lives on Mississippi Boulevard, and the people across the street from her do not know how to take care of the yard. It looks like a jungle. Matter of fact, I got pictures of you guys. Would like to see it.
Do you know the address, Skip?
I think it's.
Just tell Mark if you know it. Mr. Hunt, right there.
Yeah, you know, Jackie.
You can just walk over and whisper it to him.
It's right up from the fitness center.
I'll talk to Skip tomorrow. Okay. I'll talk to Skip tomorrow. We're going to call you.
Huh?
I'll call you tomorrow. Your favorite buddy's going to call you tomorrow, unless you want me to do it. We're going to talk to you. We'll figure it out.
Hey.
I don't have anything going on tomorrow, Skip. I'll call you. Nothing at all.
All right.
Better get it done by 10:00. 7:00, I'm going to wake you up.
I'll be awake before then. Then I got one more delicious question.
Okay.
The delicious question is that the man who's head of the police department does a bang-up job, and we should have more people strong like him. I believe he's really good. And the man from the fire department does a bang-up job, too. Matter of fact, you all do good jobs, but I'm talking above, above, and that's it.
Skip, we love seeing you. We appreciate your kind words. We're going to talk to you and make sure we get the right folks that we can get to solve those problems. I got the bush problem solved. I got the house problem solved. We're going to work on the 29th Street, 28th Street intersection. We're going to talk about that.
Work on 29th.
I'm going to work on 29th while I'm at it. Thank you, my friend. Great to see you.
Okay.
Hi, this is Teresa Myschak. My address is 3436 Valley Drive in Leclerc, Iowa. I spoke at a prior city council meeting, and I'm going to basically dovetail off of what Coach Randy has mentioned. You know, what is a premier city? How do we define what is a premier city? What services and goods does a premier city provide its populations? And in this situation, we're looking at eliminating one of the many, how he termed it, valuable amenities. You know, this is what people look for when they're moving to a new community. It's like, what does this community offer its people and young kids? Tennis is a lifelong sport. You know, it's not like something like football where you play it for a short period of your life. There are some people that I see on the tennis courts. This one guy, he's in his 90s. He's been playing for that long. So, you know, it's not only tennis courts, but it's a way of life. It's relationships, it's physical fitness, and that's, you know, that just, that small little fit place provides a whole lot of services for quite a few people. And I think it'd be really tough to replace it. The location is perfect. I don't know. I strongly disagree with this situation.
Thank you, Ms. Myschak. Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council?
Hi, my name is Catherine Hamling, and I just want to reiterate.
Give us your address for us, okay, Catherine?
2364 Palmera Court.
In Bettendorf?
Bettendorf.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I'm in here on behalf of my family, who has resided at that address for well over 30 years, close to 40 years. And I just want to speak on behalf of the residents along 23rd Street with regard to the landing. In my opinion, the deal is probably already done, and the building's going to be built, and we'll have a water park there sooner than later, which I don't agree with. But with that said, the greatest concern we have right now, then, is the expansion of streets and sidewalks that will go along 23rd Street to accommodate the traffic, the concerns about above-ground utilities and lighting, and then overflow traffic that will potentially impact the cul-de-sacs along 23rd. I really just want to read what Jason said, Dykemeyer said, about wanting to see a schematic or a plan that shows what the idea is as far as traffic flow and expansion of the roads. I'm assuming 23rd needs some work anyway, so I assume that will be all be done at the same time. And just as a side note, you know, the east side of 23rd is residential from basically Middle Road down to the bike path or Duck Creek. And so if there is any expansion, I would ask that you strongly consider doing of the road, that you would strongly consider doing it on the west side, which is all city-owned property. There are well over 30, 150-year-old oak trees along the east side of 23rd that I think are beautiful and certainly, you know, took a while to grow there. It would be a real shame for them to be cut down for an expansion of a road and sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. Hamling. Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council? If so, please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address. We'd like to hear from you. Okay, we'll close public requests of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. This is with regard to a master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to try to manage automobiles and trucks. Jason Schad, our finance director, got an opportunity to discuss this with us last night. Did you get any input from council? Any questions you want to answer tonight before the public hearing?
No. I would just say Seth Wyland from Enterprise is in the audience if there's any questions for them. Leases from an accounting purpose can often look like a debt instrument. When cities issue or take on new debt, a public hearing is required. So on the advice of bond counsel, we are holding the hearing on the master lease agreement. But as council knows, there will be individual vehicles leased through this program. We're going to start off very small, leasing a small number of vehicles to kind of pilot the program and further evaluate the pros and cons, but I think we're excited to get it going.
Any questions for Jason from council? Seeing none. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Do we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to our master lease agreement with Enterprise. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? I wouldn't think so. We'll close that public hearing. Councilmember Connors, please help me with the resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into a contract with Enterprise Fleet Management for the lease of a limited number of city vehicles. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion from council? I think you got a Webster and a Brown, so you can select the one you'd like? All right. Michelle, would you please call the roll on this resolution?
Adamson.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed our first resolution. We move to our second public hearing. This is with regard to our yearly intake repair program. Brian, do you have anything to share with us of knowledge about this program that we haven't heard already before every year?
Not really, Your Honor. This is just an annual program to remove and replace catch basins throughout the city. With this particular program, we anticipate to complete 48 catch basin rebuilds within this construction season still.
Wow. Any questions for Brian? We're very aware of the program and the good work that those folks are doing. All right. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we didn't.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to our 2023 intake repair program. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a plan, specifications, and form a contract for the 2023 intake repair program. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Very aware of the same. Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
We have unanimously approved our 2023 intake repair program. We also have a public hearing about some non-uniform amendments, and for that, we'll go to our Director of Community Development, Mr. Mark Hunt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a little bit of background, I think you probably remember, not too long ago, late 2021, early 2022, we did adopt the 2020 NEC, National Electrical Code, with amendments chosen by our city staff and our electrical commission. We've received numerous and continuing correspondence from the state of Iowa that they find us at fault with not complying with state law and the fact that we have these amendments. It is their position, the state's position, and this comes from John Lindquist, Assistant Attorney General from the state of Iowa, from an email in February. It is my understanding that the City of Bettendorf recently implemented the 2020 NEC but did so subject to numerous non-uniform amendments. See Bettendorf Code of Ordinances 104A-1. While Iowa law does allow some deviation from the EEB's adopted statewide wiring standards, Iowa Code Section 103.295 specifically provides that any section by a political subdivision with respect to amendments to the National Code shall be filed with the Board prior to enforcement by the political subdivision and shall not be less stringent than the minimum standards established by the Board by rule. So basically, they're calling us out for our amendments. In speaking with City Councilor Kern, my staff, we decided to go ahead and come in line with the state's recommendation and adopt the 2020 Code wholly without amendments, and that's presented for you here today.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mark before our public hearing?
I'll wait till afternoon.
Okay, no questions, so we'll go to our public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to those amendments that we made to the electrical code, many think for good reason, but understand why you are bringing it before us. Mr. Hunt, thank you. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and let's move to the ordinance, Councilmember Webster.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending city code to the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, by repealing city code Section 10-4A-2, non-uniform amendments. I move approval of the ordinance at first meeting.
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Webster, with your background in the building industry.
I think we did this with all the merit in the world, and I think when people have spoiled food, flooded basements, they can call the Attorney General because this is a terrible idea. It's special interest-driven, and it does a disservice to our citizens, but we have no choice. And that's where I feel it's inappropriate. I think the state should give us our availability to be able to make our rules with our judgment, So I will reluctantly vote for it, because we have to uphold the law, I guess, but it's inappropriate that we're forced to.
Further discussion. Councilmember Connors, who was our community development director for decades. Sir, what are your thoughts?
We have always had a very knowledgeable electrical commission over the years, and this isn't the only jurisdiction I worked for in this position. I've worked for two others, and we've always been allowed non-uniform amendments to the Electrical Code based on problems that our inspectors and our electrical commissions have seen out in the field. I think this is a move by the state to take away home rule from us, and I hate to see this. This is probably just the first step. We can't have uniform, non-uniform amendments with the mechanical code and many of the other codes that we adopt. So like Alderman Webster, I'm gonna reluctantly vote aye for this, but I think it's wrong from the state to do this. Remember that when you guys go and vote next time. Thanks.
Other comments or discussion on this particular item after our resident experts have spoken? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Reluctantly aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Reluctantly aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Reluctantly.
Well, we have unanimously passed it. Thank you very much to our friend at the Attorney General's office. We move to number 12. This is an ordinance at first reading. Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 8-1-1, Waterwell Construction Permit by Adding Lost Site at 1740 State Street. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the first, excuse me, that's a second reading of three on the no parking zone on Ontario. Second, second reading, this is for Councilmember Webster.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf, Iowa Zone Map for 3618 Middle Road, Lot 5, Victor Archer's Edition, A2 Residential Residence District to C2 Community Commercial District. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
This is the second time this has come before us. It will come a third, but we also talked about it committee of the home, got a nice briefing on all these times that we change land use. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That second reading also unanimously passes. We move to a trio of third readings, the first for Councilmember Sexer again.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa Zone Map for property generally located east of Crestview Heights Subdivision from A- which is A-1 Agricultural/Urban Reserve District to A2 Rural Residence District. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Really, the fourth time this has come before you all. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved that third and final reading that will not come back before us. The next is our third and final reading for Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa Zone Map for property generally located southwest of the intersection of Hopewell Avenue and Chriswell Street, A1 Agricultural/Urban Reserve District to R3 Mixed Residential District. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Further discussion here? All right, seeing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
That third and final reading also unanimously passes. We move back to Councilmember Brown for another third and final reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa Zone Map for the property generally located northwest of the intersection of Hopewell Avenue and Chriswell Street, A1 Agricultural/Urban Reserve District to R2 Single Family Residence District. I move approval of the ordinance at its last and final reading.
Second.
Any further discussion here on this third and final reading?
Your Honor?
Yes, Greg Adamson.
That's the Lord's, correct?
Yes, that's one from which you have abstained, correct?
I need to abstain, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thanks for checking in, my friend. Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Abstain.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Okay, we move to our consent agenda. Part of the consent agenda tonight does set the public hearing for the pool project, part of which is the fitness center and tennis court submitted that folks talked about tonight. So there'll be a public hearing at which you'll be able to be heard. So we do need a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.